We have a quorum, so we can call this meeting to order, and we have a pastor in the audience, who, if you will, sir, do the invocation for us.
Good evening to all, Mr. Mayor, councilpersons. It's wonderful to see all of you. Happy New Year to you all.
You're welcome, sir.
And to Richard, City Attorney, to all that is present. Let us pray. Father God, we come, knowing that you are the Creator and the Maker. We know that you are all wise. We come, Father, and pray that the decisions that are made this evening reflect the blessings of all of those that are present. We ask that you just guide us and strengthen us in everything that we do to try to help this community. And as this council leads, Father, let us follow with honor, and, Father, and let their wisdom flow, and make everything that you would have to happen, to happen to this city, Father, to glorify thee. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Robinson. If you will join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, Mr. City Manager, do you want to present this, please?
Yes, sir. This is FY 1516 CB, CDBG Annual Performance Report and Request for Funding Presentations for the next year, which is FY 17 and 18. This will be a public hearing, and we have staff available to do the presentation, and I think we have some people in the audience that will also do some presentations to council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this special meeting tonight is to provide the public with a performance review of the city's CDBG grant program for fiscal year 1516, and to allow presentations from agencies seeking funding for fiscal year 1718 from the city's CDBG grant program. No decisions on funding are being made at tonight's meeting. This meeting begins the process of staff developing the city's annual action plan for the grant program. This plan will state how federal funds received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Home Consortium will be utilized. Tonight's meeting, we have two sections for you. In section one, you're here, you and the public will hear about our annual performance report. We will cover how the CDBG program was managed and the program funds that were expended during 1516. The performance report and review is one of many HUD requirements for receiving and managing these funds. Since we also manage a SHIP grant program, which is state funds, we'll share a little bit about that program as well. Section two of the meeting, we're going to hear requests for funds. Also at tonight's meeting, council will hear from those organizations who are requesting federal funding from the Neighborhood Services Department. We did send out proposals in November of last year, and in your packet, you should have a list of those applicants and the presentations we'll see tonight. So first, we're going to start off with the presentation on tonight's meeting. Let me turn this on. Okay. So again, the purpose of our meeting tonight that we just went over. We'll begin our annual performance report first. For those who are not familiar with the Neighborhood Services Department, this is who we are and what we do. We do manage and oversee the city's federal and state grant programs, which provide services and infrastructure improvements throughout the city. Additionally, we do and currently manage the Harry T. Moore Social Service Center. Just an overview of our organizational chart. This is our mission with regards to the Community Development Block Grant and other grants that we manage. We strive to provide programs. It's not just about fixing houses, but there are also public services and economics involved in our mission. Goals and objectives that we work with when developing the action plan. We want to focus on ensuring programs are appropriate for the community needs. We want to consider the history, needs, and demographics, economics, the housing stock that helped shape the plan, and we design the program that addresses the needs related to neighborhood revitalization, preservation, and serving the needs of our residents. Our revitalization objectives are here. We also have preservation objectives, which focus on preserving and retaining existing housing stock to sustain our property values. We also consider the needs of our citizens, so we focus on a diverse range of programs, from those that serve eligible low-income residents and those that serve specific target Then when we look at our implementation of the plan, we have some criteria that we look at. First is understanding community needs, and you'll see a few of that criteria there that we consider when developing the plan. We also want to plan for change, so that means we monitor both met and unmet needs. We secure support from the community. We meet with property owners, understand the market, target programs. We also have to look at our available resources and also the constraints within those programs. So there is some analyzation that we do, and we partner with potential investors in the community. So the grants that we have managed in the department is our CDBG, which is our Community Development Block Grant. That is federal funds. Our Home Investment Partnership Program, which we know as HOME, is also federal funds. Our State Housing Initiative Partnership Program is what we call SHIP, is state funds that come from the state. And then we have our NSP program, which is our Neighborhood Stabilization Program. So what is community development? Community development are federal funds. It does allow up to 15% for public services, which is what you will hear from those agencies that are here tonight. We can use up to 20% for administration of the program. 70% of the funds must be set aside to serve low-to-moderate income persons. And the CDBG is the most flexible grant program that we have, so it can be used for a variety of things, as long as it meets those criteria. The HOME program, again, is federal funds, but we get those funds passed through through the Brevard County Home Consortium. 15% must be set aside for what we call our CHODO organizations, up to 10% for administration, and these funds can only be used for housing activities. And it does require a 25% match from non-federal funds, so that's why we use our SHIP grant program for. So here's the SHIP program. Up to 10% for admin. 30% must be set aside for low-income persons, 30% for very low-income persons. 65% of the funds must be for home ownership activities, 75% for housing, rehab, or construction, and 20% for the special needs populations. And these are the funds that we use to match to get the HOME funds. So in 1516, these were our available revenues from the grant programs, and we're only showing the CDBG and HOME here. This does not include the SHIP program. Of those funds, these were the funds that were expended and how they were broken down. So that leaves a balance there, you will see. Of that balance, all of the funds have been allocated to activities. They were just not completed during the year and carried on. The programs completed for 1516, these were the public service programs, agencies that were funded, and where those funds went expended in those programs. That's from your 15% set aside. Other projects that were completed from the balance of the funds, we had several programs under our Neighborhood Revitalization umbrella. We did some ADA improvements, some street improvements, and our Code Enforcement NICE So Housing Rehab Program, we had a total of eight homes that were provided with assistance, and we had one home that was replaced. These are the ongoing programs that weren't completed by the end of 1516, but were still ongoing, so we have those funds still set aside for those programs that are still under Basically ends our performance report for 1516. If there's any questions or comments from council or the public, we would like to hear that at this time.
Do we have any questions? I see none. Good.
So before we move on to hearing from our agencies this evening, I just kind of wanted to go over our consolidated plan strategies. These are the strategies that staff will use to evaluate the proposals submitted to the Neighborhood Services Department when providing our recommendations to council.
Can you hear them?
So we can pick that back up. Actually, can we go back?
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Would you move the microphone a little closer?
Sure. Sorry about that.
We're having some problem.
My papers are in the way. Can we go back to the previous presentation? I'll pick up where we left off, if possible. All right, thank you. Okay, so our consolidated plan strategies, here are the consolidated plan strategies that this, that is found in the city's five-year grant program plan. So those, I believe we have five, so there's two of them. And then there's, so there's four. Oh, there's one more after this. This kind of gives you a snapshot of the last 10 years of funding the city has received through the CDBG and HOME grant programs. You'll see that there was, earlier in the program, we received more than we are receiving now, but I think the programs, the revenues are starting to come back. There was a decline there for a little while. So going into 1718, if we use this year's 1617 allocation as an estimate for, ooh, that was, for next year, this would be our estimate for the CDBG program that we would receive. And this is how they would break down: administration, public services.
Somebody carrying a cash register?
Yeah. I don't know how those sound effects sound. And then our projects.
Oh, it's on the menu.
We're going to hear it again. For our HOME program, this is the estimated allocations for next year. Okay, so what we'd like to do is, I'd like to have each of our agencies that applied for funding this year come up and give a brief explanation about their program and the funding that they're asking for this year. So we're going to begin with, let me find my list here, Aging Matters in Brevard for a Meals on Wheels program.
Good evening, and thanks for having us here tonight.
Good evening.
I'm Paula Schroeder. I'm the Communications Manager with the Brevard Senior Nutrition Program, which includes Meals on Wheels. And also here this evening is our CEO Cindy Flackmeyer, who is also a resident of Titusville. So we like Titusville. So Terry, should I just go ahead and launch into it? Okay. So we have funding from a variety of sources to deliver Meals on Wheels to about 750 clients every day throughout the county. Most of our funding is through the Older Americans Act, which is a federal program, of course. And then the cities provide the CDBG funding to supplement that. And here in Titusville, we have 32 people currently receiving Meals on Wheels. And by people, I mean, these are people that must be over the age of 60. They are homebound. That's one of the requirements for receiving Meals on Wheels. They really can't get out and shop for themselves. Many of them cannot safely cook for themselves. They may, it may present a danger to them to do so. And of course, in order to stay healthy, you need to eat. You need to have some good nutritious food. And so that is what we do. We prepare all those meals at our kitchen in Cocoa, and they are designed by a dietitian, a nutritionist, to meet 33% of the RDA of people over the age of 60. It's a hot meal, delivered fresh by a volunteer. So not only do our Meals on Wheels clients receive the food, which is a good, hot, balanced meal, but they also get a visit from a real, live human being. And I don't know if you've been looking at any newspapers and magazines lately, but there are more and more articles coming out and research being done about the impact of social isolation on seniors and loneliness. And so even having that visit, knowing that somebody's going to come to your door once a day, five days a week, it's Monday through Friday that we do this, it's something that they look forward to. And our volunteers can tell if there's something not quite right with the client. You know, maybe they're not up and dressed and looking the way they normally do. And so we have emergency contacts that we can call if somebody is not there, they're not answering the door. We make sure that we know where they are and what they're doing before we leave that area. So it's much more, that's kind of one of the slogans of Meals on Wheels, it's more than a meal. It really is about that contact. So that is, that is what we have been receiving funding for, from the city of Titusville. But another part of our Brevard Senior Nutrition Program is our Seniors at Lunch program, and that's a congregate dining program, where people who can get out of the house can come together and gather together. Again, it's that socialization, that time to share a meal together. They get the same meal as the Meals on Wheels folks do, but they come together to a place. We have a contract with SCAT, so people who don't drive but are able to get out of their house can get picked up by a bus, brought to the site, which is at St. James AME Church. They have their meal. We do activities. They play bingo. They do, they have speakers that come in. We just had a session last week called Ask the Doctor. He talked about pain management, and they loved that. That was very good. So we use it as an educational event, as well as providing nutrition. So that currently, we currently have 42 people signed up and attending the Seniors at Lunch program in Titusville, and as I said, 32 on the Meals on Wheels program. And we do have to limit the number of people in Meals on Wheels because of funding considerations. And so we really do encourage people who are able to get out to attend the Seniors at Lunch, and they really are benefiting from that a great deal. I just wanted to emphasize, too, that we do target low-income people, particularly with the CDBG funding. And I looked today, and the average monthly income for our Meals on Wheels clients is So that's not a lot. And for many of them, this meal that they receive is really the only meal they get in a day. I mean, a real balanced meal. And then occasionally, when corporations step up or organizations, we can do a Saturday meal delivery. But, you know, that's not one of our regular programs. But we do offer that. We have some shelf-stable foods for people for emergency purposes that we also provide. Right. And then just for, also for the Seniors at Lunch program, this is for the county. We served 5,095 meals in December. That's just one month. So we're serving well over 200,000 meals a year to our folks. So we do questions now, or we're going to wait?
Anybody have any questions? I do, I'm sorry.
That's, that's great talk.
I do have a question for you. Do you, does this money, can it be leveraged to get additional funding?
Yes, yes. We, well, let's see. I always have a question about that for our CEO. I don't know that we use the CDBG funds for leverage, though.
We use county funds.
We use county and United Way funding.
Okay.
And we, that is required to receive our Older Americans Act funding. Yeah.
Very good. Any questions?
I just had one. For the Seniors at Lunch program, are there certain age requirements or anything? You said you target low income, but do you allow?
Anybody can come, as long as we have space available. They do have to be over the age of 60. That's the only thing. We do not, we do not have any, you know, they don't have to fill out forms. They do go through an assessment.
Okay.
And then, but for our Meals on Wheels program, that's a much more in-depth assessment, and they do have to meet health requirements. That we know that they're unable to prepare meals at home for themselves.
I actually was able to be a speaker at one of your luncheons, and it was actually a very good program, probably one of the best things I've done, just to see the excitement. I remember I did a goal-setting thing with them, and there was a 90-year-old woman there. She was growing her hair out to donate it, and it just, yeah, so I really appreciate everything that you guys are doing.
They are amazing. They really are. Yeah. And it's just, I don't know, just the stories that you can get to. Just drop in any day between 10:30 and 12:30 at St. James AME Church. And, yeah, they'd love to have visitors come in and say hello from the city.
Thank, yes. Sure.
Not a question, but I just can't help but comment, my mom was a recipient of Meals on Wheels for many years before she passed, and when you noted the socialization, I cannot tell you how she looked forward to that knock at the door. And I just, like I said, I just couldn't go by without saying that. There's so much more than the meal. Well, we struggled sometimes to even get her to eat it, but the socialization was huge. So bless you guys. It's awesome.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, that's the gratifying part of it.
Well, let me ask you, so I'm assuming if we walk in off the street, you'll be happy and take volunteers? Oh.
Oh, do we need volunteers in Titusville? Yes, we do. Yes.
Okay.
And we have a variety of ways that we get out. You know, we go to all the health fairs and, you know, but the city is really a great resource for us, too. I mean, if somebody just calls your city hall and says, "Do you need any volunteers to do anything?" Yes, please send them to Aging Matters in Brevard and the Meals on Wheels.
Okay.
Yeah. Because it takes a lot of volunteers. You know, you figure every person in the program has five people that's delivering. You know, most of the volunteers drive to about, it's about 10 to 12 people on a route.
Okay.
Most of the volunteers drive to about, it's about 10 to 12 people on a route, on average. But again, it's Monday through Friday, it's every day, so. And we have a lot of snowbirds. We're, we're doing good in this wintertime, but come June, July, we're in great need. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Sure. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And who's next up?
Thank you. We're going to hear from Early Learning Coalition of Brevard.
Okay. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Kathy Odom. I'm the Director of Business Operations with the Early Learning Coalition. Our executive director apologizes and sends her regrets for not being here. She's actually meeting with our board tonight, so just a little bit of a conflict there. But I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you guys. The Early Learning Coalition's School Readiness Program serves families who are working, going to school, disabled, receiving cash assistance, and children referred to us from DCF, who are in the need of a safe and nurturing childcare environment. For many load of moderate-income, working families, support with the high cost of childcare is what allows them to continue work or go to school. Families are required to pay a parent fee. It's a cost-sharing basis program, and it's based on their household size and their individual income, or, excuse me, their family, household income. It's not uncommon for families to be asked to pay $195 to $200 a week for childcare for one child. So imagine if you had three children, I mean, $600, up to $600 a week for childcare. I know that for some of us in this room, that would be difficult, so imagine the low to moderately-low income families. It takes up to 50 to 85% of their income, and you can see why they might not choose to work because of that cost. While it allows them to work, there are other far-reaching benefits for not only the family, but the, also the community in general. Services allow, excuse me, services also provide access to high-quality early learning experiences for children who may not otherwise have opportunity to do so. The quality early education services are provided through a network of over 180 childcare centers in Brevard County. We made, the payments from the Early Learning Childcare, excuse me, Early Learning Coalition to childcare providers, they're faith-based, school-board-based, family-based, homes, and that sort of thing. Currently, we have 26 providers in the city of Titusville that provide services for school-readiness children. Many of these businesses would tell you that they are able to remain operational due to the funding that they receive from the Early Learning Coalition. Currently in Brevard, we serve on average about 3,400 children on a monthly basis. We currently have 718, as of today, 718 children on our waitlist, and 101 of those, or about 15%, are from the city of Titusville. Those numbers have stayed the same. It's like, no matter what we try, the numbers just seem to keep the same for the city of Titusville. Just to let you know, because I know, Mayor, you asked matching funds. These funds are matched from federal funding, the funding that we're requesting, at a rate of $16.67 per dollar. So basically, for every dollar that we get from the city of Titusville, we pull down $16.67 in federal funding that we invest back into the city of Titusville. So it's about $400,000 of matching funds that we put back into the city of Titusville for those children. Of course, the children are income-eligible, excuse me, children. Of course, they're going to be income-eligible, they don't have income, but their parents or guardians. We are, with the award that we're... There's a typo in my report. I just realized it, I'm sorry. I said 400,000, but with what we've asked for, it's only, it's 200,000 worth. We bought, asked for 12, so 200,000, excuse me, on that. So anyways, that's about it for, sorry.
That's great, that's fine.
I'm not used to presenting, sorry.
It's okay, you did fine. Any questions? I see none, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next we'll hear from North Brevard Charity Sharing Center.
Again, good evening to all. I'm here to thank you for the opportunity to present to you, to kind of let you know what some of the things that are going on in your community. You know, North Brevard Charities has been in this community since 1958, and in 1997, we started our housing program, just with basic needs housing. And that was for individuals and families that were homeless. We have developed that program up to 32 homes from Cocoa to MEMS, and we are continuing to add program. We have a, and we've also done some new construction and sold them to economically disadvantaged families as we have progressed along. What we're doing now, and not only serving basic needs, and we are finding out, as you probably well know, that there is a, an addiction problem in our country, and it's driven by a lot of things. But one thing that I have found, that the commercials on televisions are now talking about, it's the phrase opiate-induced constipation. And what that is, is that these individuals that are on opiates for pain relief, in a lot of cases, become hooked on them. And that drives from the age of 17 to 92, so to speak. And five years ago, by a gentleman that some of you may know, Ed Poe, made some funds available, and we were selected at North Brevard Charities to start a, an addiction recovery program. We named that program Project Maybe, because of all of the things. I've been working with people ever since I retired from the military, 23 or so years ago. And, and I've been working in this community with a lot of you and a lot of your family members and friends. And when we started this program, we had to design a lot of things and do a lot of changes. Have a home that is available for these individuals, have security, have counselors available. So we had to re-establish a lot of things. But being that I knew that the problem was going to continue to get worse, not only in our community, but throughout the United States. We started, we opened one of our homes, we converted it, and we called it, it's our Recovery Center that is located on our main campus down at, at the, on Hopkins, Hopkins location. In that, over the last two years, we have been, had a success rate of people leaving our program, the basic program, in 91 days, about an 80% success rate. Reason that we have a success rate is because it is a problem, it is a program that is based on individual desire to help themselves. We don't nurture them, we give them a environment, we call it a clean house, where you come in, and if you want to get better, you have the opportunity, the counseling, and everything else, food, everything is provided for you, there's a lot of restrictions. But you have to work every day, you have to give back, you have to pay if you can, you have to pay part of the tuition to go through the program. We are now getting ready to open our large facility, which is located on 740 Waggoner Street, right next door to the Harry T. Moore Center. You probably have seen the construction and the changes that has gone on. And we hope to have a grand opening here in about mid-February, where everyone can come. We have one member that, of your staff, that has, did a walkthrough, and she was pretty pleased with what she saw. We have television cameras. So basically, what happens in the program is that they will spend a 91-day supervised program on our main campus, in one of our housing units, a four-bed unit with a supervisor in the unit, and they monitor every day. And if they complete the program successfully, and they want to stay, understand that you probably have heard and are aware of, that when addiction is not a temporary issue, it is a lifetime issue. So 91 days, and most, a lot of the programs are 91-day programs, but they get you on a journey. So we are opening up the facility for, over next to the Harry T. Moore Center, for one year to stay in the program under supervision, under cameras. You have to steer, you can't do anything that you could, could do on there, but you have a little bit more freedom, but all of the counseling, you have to work. It's not a place where you lay around all day. There's a lot of facilities around that people stay in for years and years and years. I have been working with North Brevard Charities for 20-plus years, and some people on, in some of these programs, in some of these homes, have been there the 21 years that I've been with North Brevard Charities, and they're not getting any better, because they are afraid to leave. We guide the individuals to return to a normal life. And that's going to, that takes a lot of spiritual guidance, whatever they believe in, we don't force them to be, but they have to have guidance and understand that they're going to need help for the rest of their lives. So the application and request that we put before the city of Titusville is to help us continue to expand as we open five more beds. We took a boarding house that had, at one time, 12 rooms, small rooms, and we opened it up and made common rooms there, so according to city, meeting city code and everything, it's a five-bed facility. And it is the second part of the program. Right now, in our home and on the main campus, we have four individuals going through. We worked with the circle, worked with Circles of Care, the court system, as well as the, when Circles of Care has an individual that they think is suitable for our program, we do not take people, individuals, unless they have gone through a detox, and we work with Circle of Care to get them through that particular program, and they show a desire that they want to get better. And that becomes quite evident after three or four days, because you can see the taste in their mouth and how they find it. And yes, I believe, and all of the individuals that have gone through, they said this is one of the better programs, and they've been through several programs before. But we don't put any pressure. One of the things that I believe in, in life, you have to accept people where they are, not where you want them to be. And that's our objective at, in Project Maybe, accept them where they are, and if they're willing to listen, be taught and guided, and to receive a lot of love and TLC, we are able to help them. And we are asking you for tuition and support to operate and continue to do this in the community as requested by one of the individuals that had family members at some point that was suffering with some addiction issues. And he always told me, he said, "Joe, one day when my ship comes in..." And I didn't know he was going to put so much weight on what I could do with the things, but I have been very pleased at the results that we get out of our Project Maybe program. And right now, the house manager is an individual that I know, one person on this council has met a bunch of times, and he speaks very highly of him. As he met him, he was always, had a kind word for him, as he met him, when, no matter what drunken state or state he was in. And he is doing a wonderful job. He dropped out of the program because he went backwards, and he came back, and he'll tell you right today that he wouldn't be alive today if he hadn't have gotten back into the program. And now he's not, he's a part-time employee, and he's also the house manager, helping guide other people through the program. That's what we want you to help us support. And the dollars come from anywhere that I can present and talk to people to help, help make a difference within your community by those that go so sometime unseen, untalked to, and very much unloved. Thank you.
No, thank you, sir. I know you're, what you do over there and how much positive effect it has on our community, so I appreciate it. I will ask you the same question I asked the others, however. Are you able to leverage any of this money in any way to create more funding for yourself?
Only by keeping it open, and I can raise, I raise funds to match every dollar, because what we're at, it's about the size of the program right now. It has 100, approximately $180,000 yearly cost. So I have to continue to try to raise money to put with it, not necessarily match it.
I understand. Again, I thank you. Any questions in council? Yes?
I know you touched on it briefly, but could you just give us a quick overview of what the requirements are to be able to go through the program? Should someone, like, approach you and say, "I'm interested, I think this would be good for me"? What that looks like?
Well, the qualification is to have an addiction, and first off, and have a desire to, to be better. Those are the qualifications to just get the three-day interview. And as we determine that you're serious about recovery, then we start the process and you enter the program. We have on our, in our main building, we have NA meetings every night. The individual have to make meetings, and they have to go through counseling. We have spiritual guidance that is available, of course, to the individual, and that is a very, very much part of recovery.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, thank you Pastor Roberts. Next up?
All right, our last is the South Brevard Women's Center.
Hey there, good evening. My name is Becky Lemstrom, and I'm with the Women's Center. With the city's support and fiscal year 1516, we wanted to come and say thank you first and foremost, because we were able to provide 2,607 services to 764 city of Titusville residents who are victims of some sort of violence. We were able to provide shelter in our safe house to 87 individuals who were fleeing violence. We were able to give crisis counseling, personal advocacy, hotline counseling for folks who are just calling in to try to find help, assistance with injunctions for protection, and victims for compensation claims. I know some of you are new to the council, so I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Women's Center or not. But anyway, we've been in Brevard County for 41 years. We've been up here in Titusville since 2010. We are able to assist over 12,000 individuals each year. We have several programs. We have a victim services program that provides victims of interpersonal violence with assistance, and that can be domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking, stalking, all kinds of things like that. We're able to give them victim advocacy, planning, support, assistance with injunctions for protection, emergency safe houses here in Titusville, as well as in Melbourne. We recently took over the Sexual Assault Victim Services Program from the State Attorney's Office just back in September. And now we have a rape crisis center. We have nurses that are specialized in forensic exams, and we can provide advocacy from soon as someone calls in, and throughout their experience with that. We have a counseling program that covers all kinds of counseling, from trauma resolution to basic family counseling, that's free for victims of violence, and it's on a sliding scale for income for others. We have a youth program for typically middle-aged, or not middle-aged, middle-school-aged girls that focuses on self-esteem building. We have two summer camps here up in Titusville and in Melbourne. And then we have a sort of a workshop series that happens a couple of times during the semester. And then we have our Self-Sufficiency Program, where we have transitional housing for homeless women and their children, a basic needs program, a career guidance program. women and their children, a basic needs program, a career guidance program. Um, but anyway, what we're here tonight is to continue to ask support for, um, funding our emergency safe house. Like I say, we had eighty-seven individuals come in through the safe house in last fiscal year. They come when they, um, are fleeing violence and don't have anywhere else to go, they are all a hundred percent extremely low, low, or moderately low income, um, women with children. Um, the children that they come with can be up to eighteen, or if they're in high school, they can be eighteen, you know, until they're finishing school. We don't have restrictions on, um, male children, which a lot of shelters may have. And they come and get advocacy services for the immediate crisis, and they plan for their future and move on from their abusers. We follow up with clients when they leave at three, six, and twelve months to make sure that they're still living safely, haven't returned to their abuser, and are living violence-free. We find that it's, uh, we have about eighty-six percent, um, of our clients, when they're about at twelve months, are still maintaining their safety, and, um, we're happy to hear We have, let's see, clients usually stay for about one and a half months, but we don't have a timeline where, you know, you have to be out, you know, so we're open because people are in different circumstances. Some people just come for the night, two nights, so they can figure out some family to go to, or another place to stay, but some people who haven't worked, don't have a car, that kind of thing, need a, a longer transition time, and the assistance that we can give them through all of our services. Um, this, what the funds will go for are operating the safe house, um, we have a, we can fit eleven people normally in the house at one time, we have had more in there if, you know, someone has a lot of young children, um, of course, we, you know, young people are smaller, and we can fit a few more in. Um, so, but anyway, maintaining a household of usually about eight is our average, but up to eleven, um, you know, paper towels, you know, just your normal household supplies that we all have, but when you, you don't have that, and we're providing it, as, as well as utility costs, security costs, and, um, assistance for the client that can help them move on. So sometimes some will come in with not a car, or a car that's not in good shape, um, and so we'll help them get that fixed. If they need to, you know, have relatives out of state or out of the area, we'll help them, you know, with bus tickets to try to go somewhere where they can start, start over and, and, and not be where their abuser is. Car insurance, just all kinds of different things that someone in that kind of situation needs help with to, to get going on their own and recover from their, their crisis and, and, uh, start to live safely. So, that's about it. Do you have any questions for us?
Any questions?
Oh, I'll give you one more. Yes, we can match our funds.
All right. Saves me from asking.
We, uh...
Tell me, tell me, oh...
Yeah, 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 we have a, a grant from the Victims of Crime Act that comes through Tallahassee, through the state, that starts off at the Department of Justice, and we can match our funds at a four-to-one ratio, so we have...
Very good.
We do have that, so, any other questions?
Anything else? I see none, thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much.
All right.
We have actually just a short, um, presentation here on the actual city, uh, partnership programs that we would like to request funding for.
Sure, go ahead.
For next year. So we have presentation number two. And again, this was, um, with our CDBG, uh, grant, uh, dollars, and we have two requests this year under our Neighborhood Revitalization Program. And just to show you, um, I know it's kind of hard to see, but maybe you can see it in your packet, this is the target area for the city of Titusville, this outlines, uh, show you the border of our low-income areas in the city that are predetermined to be qualified for HUD funding. The first program we have, uh, our Public Works Department is seeking funding to continue the resurfacing of streets located within that South Street target area, and those, you'll see there, the streets that they propose, uh, approximately one-point-seven miles for seventeen, eighteen, um, under the program. And then our Code Enforcement Division, um, is also seeking of additional funding to continue the NICE program, and that NICE stands for Neighborhood Improvement through Code Enforcement, um, in the target area, and the goal there is to achieve and preserve the integrity of our neighborhoods in the target area, I believe. And, um, our budget will use the remaining funds after the fifteen percent set aside for public, uh, services to do the street improvement program and the NICE program, and we have approximately thirty thousand that will carry over, I estimate, at the end of this year, uh, to fund those two programs. And we do have a representative from Code Enforcement here, if council had any questions about the NICE program, and I think the street is pretty self-explanatory on resurfacing, so...
Any questions from anyone? Apparently not, thank you very much.
All right, and we'll just, um, just kind of to give you a brief, um, when we, staff evaluates the proposals, we're, obviously, we're going to be looking at, um, HUD's regulations, whether or not the proposals meet a national objective, we also look at the eligibility of the program, the capacity of the agency, the cost per unit, so we do look at several, um, criteria when evaluating them. And we expect to have our funding recommendations back before council at your first meeting in February.
Great. Thank you much. Next item is public comment, and I would remind anybody that comes up that, that, as this is a special meeting, the comment can only be directly related to the agenda items of tonight, this meeting. Anyone have anything they wish to talk about related to this? I see none. Mr. City Manager, do we have any other business to perform?
Yes, sir, that concludes.
In that case, we've done all that's required, I call this meeting adjourned, we will, uh, come back at five after six, we'll take a ten-minute, twelve-minute break.